Good evening and thank you for joining us this morning, this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Ortega?
Stevens?
Here.
Black?
Here. I might add that Councilwoman Ortega has been excused for this evening. If you'd please stand for the pleasure of allegiance, after which if you'd remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Pastor Mike Popovich representing the First Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to ask a blessing for our leaders and for the business of our city. We humble ourselves to know, Lord, that there are things that are sometimes beyond us and we need wisdom greater than we have. And so we seek you this evening and ask your blessing on all present and all business to come before this council. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Thank you.
It's nice to hear that again, Mr. Mayor.
That is good. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number three as a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A treasuries report. Council may wish to consider the treasuries report for February 2021 showing cash and investments as of February 28, 2021. Good evening, Jim.
So I'll just make a few comments and then entertain any questions that you might have. As you can see on the cash report, it shows that the balance in February is about $2 million less in total than what the balance in January of 2021 was. And if you look at the next couple of pages into the report, it shows that the general fund has a decline in cash balance of about $1.5 million. And that represents the fact that the general fund gets two fairly large property tax payments, one in January and the other in July. And then as a result of that, it utilizes the property tax receipts that it got in January for the rest of the fiscal year and has essentially a dry period for the months following up until July. You'll see that Fund 950 has a balance of $910,000, which can be transferred to the general fund after a budget amendment takes place, but that would involve an increase in the general fund resources of $910,000 as a result of the balance that's in that fund. I've added revenue reports and expenditure reports to the hardbound copy that you got. And just bear in mind as you read through those revenue and expenditure reports that not all revenues and expenses flow evenly throughout the year. And despite the fact that only 43% of the year has elapsed, some expenditures flow a little bit differently than what the number of months are into the year. You will see some variances. You should be concerned if you see variances in the salaries and benefits which exceed the percentage of the year remaining, whereas in the case of services and supplies and capital expenditures, those expenditures flow a little bit differently as a result of the way those expenditures tend to happen. Be glad to entertain any questions that the city council has.
Questions for Jim? See him none. Thank you, Jim. Move to B, Human Relations Advisory Board appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Christopher Cole Clegg to serve as a member of the Human Relations Advisory Board Committee, replacing Tarek Rex who resigned. Christopher's term will begin April 1, 2021, and will expire March 22, 2024. C, council decision love-to-bid short plat approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the short plat for love-to-bid subdivision, which divides approximately 6.61 acres of land located at 3,300 South Fifth Avenue into four lots, subject to conditions. Councilman Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve Agenda Item Number Three, Items A through C.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four, we have a proclamation tonight. The proclamation is for National Therapy Animal Day. And Councilwoman Lurick will read the proclamation.
I'm going to remove this because it really muffles me. So first, I'm really excited to be able to read this because we haven't had one in like a year. So I'm honored that I get to be the first one. So, "Whereas there are thousands of pet partners' therapy animal teams serving in communities across the United States, and whereas Pet Partners has designated April 30 as National Therapy Animal Day, and whereas Pet Partners' therapy animal teams play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human-animal bond, and whereas Pet Partners' therapy animal teams make millions of visits per year in settings such as hospitals, nursing homes, schools, and hospice, and whereas Pet Partners' therapy animal teams interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students facing literacy challenges and those approaching end-of-life, and whereas these exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need. Now, therefore, I, Brian Seblad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim April 30, 2021, to be National Therapy Animal Day in Pocatello, and encourage citizens to celebrate our therapy animals and their human handlers, and salute the service of therapy animal teams in our community and in communities across the nation."
Thank you. Wendy, if you'd like to say something?
Just a quick thank you. Tammy Carson. And it's the 30th, which is a Friday, so I will be talking and probably making rounds in the city that day. So I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank you and just to let you know, when it came out that I was going to read this, I had several people contact me and just say, even though their animals are not therapy animals per se-
Right.
-during COVID, their animals-
Oh, yeah.
...provided therapy nonetheless.
And it's been hard this year because we're regular volunteers at the hospital. We haven't been there for a year, so.
So many people said that their animals were the thing that got them through this tough year. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you. We appreciate it. They love it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Five as a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On April 1, 5:30 p.m. will be a clarification meeting. April 1, 6:00 p.m. will be a regular council meeting. April 8, 9:00 a.m. will be city council work session. Other events as a reminders, annual spring cleanup for city cemetery begins March 29. Crews will remove and discard all flowers and decorations. Citizens are asked to remove decorations, et cetera. They have placed on cemetery space if they wish to avoid disposal of them by staff. Cleanup is expected to continue through the end of April. Compost happens. Yard waste-only composting program begins April 6 and continues through the last week of November. Yard waste carts will be picked up on the same day as your regular collection day. For more information, contact the sanitation department. Face coverings are required when individuals are in public places within the city of Pocatello. I might just add that just recently Idaho or Bonneville County was ranked number one in the nation for capital on new cases. And so I would ask you to please stay the course, wearing the mask to help our numbers stay as low as they can. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item Six. Oh, I just might add, if you are here for Agenda Item Number Eight, it has been pulled from the agenda for tonight, and it will be on a future agenda. Okay. Agenda Item Six is a public hearing zoning map and comprehensive amendment property located near 4,300 block of South Fifth Avenue. This time has been set aside for council to accept comments from the public regarding a request by Bill Isley of B Bad Investments LLC to rezone seven separate parcels of land from Commercial General CG to Light Industrial LI and amend the comprehensive plan map from mixed use NU to employment E. The property is located near the 4,300 block of South Fifth Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the proposal. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions. I declare the public hearing open. Council, have you had any expedite contacts in regards to this agenda item? Okay. Is Bill Isley? I haven't seen him here yet. So let's jump to staff. Maybe get a staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Matthew Lewis, senior planner here with the city. As known in the agenda, Bill Isley of B Bad Investments LLC has submitted an application requesting to rezone seven separate parcels of land from Commercial General to Light Industrial. Said parcels are described on page one of your executive summary and also depicted in an aerial view. The proposed zone change also requires a concurrent amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map from the current designation of mixed use to employment. The subject parcels are all undeveloped and currently zoned Commercial General. Lot 1, Block 1 of South Cliff's first addition was platted in 2018. The lot is located off South Cliff's Drive via South Fifth Avenue. All parcels are predominantly flat, consisting of native sagebrush, grasses, and gravel with a basalt base. The 9.1 acre parcel can be accessed from South Fifth Avenue and South Valley Road. The 5.44 acre parcel is accessed via South Valley Road. I-15 on-off ramps are located within a half mile of Cliff's Drive. South Fifth Avenue is capable of handling any truck traffic or otherwise to these subject properties. The subject properties are unique in light of the basalt cliff resulting in the 11.57 and 9.1 acre parcels being elevated approximately 20 feet from South Fifth Avenue resulting in lands being more visible from I-15. Properties fronting adjacent to South Fifth Avenue extending from Cliff's Drive to South Valley Road will remain zoned Commercial General. Land use is located on Cliff's Drive include the Forest Service and Barrel of Land Management offices with a large storage area for equipment. Bear Lake Outfitters was established in 2016, which sells various trailers less than two and a half or two and a half tons weight as well as sheds. Other uses near the site that would fit in the LI zoning district include Idaho Transportation Department District Five Headquarters, and most existing land use is located in Bennett County extending to Century High School. As previously mentioned, the comprehensive plan map designation is currently mixed use. Staff was unable to find the reasoning given to the designation and has not ruled out a mapping error. The parcels have been zoned Commercial General as far back as 1981 with little way of development occurring. A mixed-use development of any or of any kind on the subject parcels and remaining properties from South Valley Road north to Exon Station is unlikely. And that's that missing piece on page four under number six. So north to Exon Station is unlikely. All property owners within a 300-foot radius of the land to be rezoned in the comprehensive plan map were provided notice of the public hearing in order that they may provide comment on the application. Notice was also published in the Idaho State Journal, and signs were posted on each subject parcel. No written correspondence has been received to date. Following a public hearing held on the evening of February 24, 2021, the Plan and Zoning Commission recommends approval. Other requests finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 17.02.180 of Pocatello Municipal Code with the conditions as provided in their findings of fact and recommendation. This concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Matt?
So under number four, talks about sewer and so forth. So I know that over where the hot shots are, we ended up with, you know, I think a septic system. And since we know along Fifth, you know, that's one of our hotspots in terms of high nitrates and private wells and so forth. Does this guarantee that sewer will be hooked up to city services?
Sewer is that can be-
Right. So we won't be seeing a request for an exception and doing septic's up there or something?
I'm thinking no.
Okay.
Any other questions for Matt? Okay, Matt, with that, have you had any correspondence that the council has not seen in your office?
I have not, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, have you had any in your office?
No, sir.
Okay, sounds good. I'm a little concerned about Bill Isley. He's not like this. Something must have come up and so I-
Pretty surprising, so.
I'm confident if there was an emergency somewhere, he'd be here. So I just might put that out there. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, then, with that, I declare the public hearing closed. Council, how do you wish to proceed? Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend approval of the application made by B Bad Investments LLC to rezone the subject property, subject to all the conditions that are listed in this act.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Seven, short plat Cream Top subdivision. Council may wish to approve a short plat application by Cream Tops Investment LLC and Matthew G. Lowes, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Servin, to subdivide approximately 2.56 acres into four lots. The subdivision is a replat of a portion of the McDonald Acres subdivision. The general location of the property is within the 400 block of Federgill Road. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions. Council President Adamson?
I was waiting.
I was waiting.
Yeah.
We were all one or no one?
Yeah, I move to approve the request with the conditions noted.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Adamson and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. As a reminder, Agenda Item Eight has been pulled from the agenda. So Agenda Item Nine, appeal of Historic Preservation Commission Decision 224 North Main Street. Craig Yaden of Yaden Properties LLC has appealed the Historic Preservation Commission's decision denying a certification of appropriateness for replacing the ghost sign and a new mural on the Peterson Building located at 224 North Main Street. Is Craig here?
Right here.
I don't, I mean, I guess really if the council's okay with uncomfortable, then Craig doesn't have to say anything. But if you'd like to hear from him, we can-
I'd like to hear from him.
I'd like to hear from him.
Okay, it sounds like we have questions for you.
Good evening. My name's Craig Yaden, resident here in Pocatello. And I just appreciate you putting us on your agenda tonight. We went before the Historic Preservation Committee last year in December, and we presented our mural proposal on the southeast wall. And as noted, I think I noted, we're going to be doing some tuck pointing on that wall, and it's going to necessarily really degrade, almost destroy the existing mural there. And so it's going to be quite an eyesore in the historic downtown. At the first meeting that or the council I went to, they suggested changing what we proposed as purpose back to the Peterson. And so in attempt to just try to find some common ground, I agreed to go back, and we went to our artist and we revised that. But after seeing it, it just didn't really click with me, and it wasn't something really felt like I wanted to fund. And so we've just gone to a lot of effort to try to be compliant with historical codes downtown. I think you've seen where downtown, there's a lot of windows that have been put in that haven't met recommendations. Our plan, we're putting in the proper windows to reflect the historic era. In addition, we're refurbishing the stained glass windows, kind of the historic P. There's eight windows on the third and fourth floor. So the thought was how do we incorporate P of this, you know, long past business? And so our vision, we thought this name of purpose, and it just fits what we're endeavoring to do there is to promote and instill in our community youth incorporating multi-generational activities and events and trainings in what we'll call the purpose building. And we believe partnering our experienced and talented adults in our community with our youth is an inspiring way to help young people find their purpose and inspiration in their lives. So through music recitals, concerts, and art, we hope to offer exposure to many of our youth that they might not otherwise have. So kind of with this said, I just hope you just see the significance of the name purpose to us. And when I went back to the council the second time, the Historic Preservation Council the second time, they appreciated some of the historical pieces that we put in there, and they liked that part. But this time around, they had questions about the famous Michelangelo Hand of God, and was asking me what all that was about. And I really didn't get into that. But that seemed to be their main concern. But as for myself, I can't think of a better way to express inspiration and purpose, but pointing out that until you get in touch with your Creator, it's hard to find real purpose in this life. So that's kind of the thought behind it. And thanks for letting me share tonight.
Okay, questions for Craig? Well, we got him up there. Do you have any?
So you have had everything else approved by the Historical Commission, right?
That's correct. We're proposing a change on the North Union Pacific Road, new rear entry, and some changes up front with entrances and the windows. But yeah, everything else except this has been approved.
And so there's no possibility of doing preservation, restoration on the existing mural to maintain the historic integrity?
Well, if you'll just picture the, I would call it hatching, but if you just take that wall and draw many vertical and horizontal lines, it will destroy the or highly degrade it. So-
Right.
While it's possible, it would just require someone to pay for that, wanting to pay for that Peterson sign.
I mean, it does appear that it's, and Linda, you would know more about this, I think, but it does appear that the current mural is part of the historic significance of the building. And would it be not possible to create, if a new mural is proposed versus restoration of the current mural, would it not be possible to create something that would be historically in concert with the building versus pulling something from the, what, the Sistine Chapel?
Well, anything is possible. So-
I mean, I-
I think my attempt was pointing to some of our more iconic historic locations in Pocatello that felt like that was a pretty good attempt to point to some history. But as far as Peterson, I personally, I put in my notes there, I don't find it an appealing sign myself, but as it is.
And I guess that's the part of this that I struggle with. And I understand the concerns about, you know, what it would take to restore that, and that you personally, that's not what you want to put your money into. But at the same time, that's an important part of Pocatello's history, and that's what the Historic Preservation Commission's, you know, task is or charge is, is to preserve our history. And so I struggle with this because I understand where you're coming from. But, you know, there are certain rules that, you know, that they're supposed to follow and meet and ask people in the community that are working on projects to meet. And if we sort of start saying, well, you have to, but you don't have to, that's where we run into trouble. So that's where I struggle with this. Also, as, and this is where, you know, we talked about earlier, the issue of subjectivity. I'm an art historian, and to me, to see the co-opting of Michelangelo doesn't, I mean, that doesn't appeal to me in this case. I mean, I don't see the connection to Pocatello, to our history. So I think we're losing something of our unique history and drawing on something that isn't really part of that. But, you know, that's my opinion. So, but I do understand the commission is coming from a place of, you know, these are the rules they're supposed to follow and apply, and request that people in the community follow. And it looks like, you know, that they're being asked to sort of arbitrarily decide when to follow them and when not to follow them. And I, so I think, you know, hands are tied to some extent here. But I understand where you're coming from too, you know?
If I could just add, if you go down Main Street, there's been a lot of requests, I got to think, that have been approved because there's a whole lot of vinyl windows along Main Street. There's a whole lot of things that have gone on that somebody overlooked a rule. So-
Yeah. And they're not supposed to be, the other part is, a lot of times, people skip the historic preservation and just do what they want to do and don't come to them and then just sort of think, well, I'll see if I can get away with this. But, so that being said, I appreciate that you are doing everything you can to follow the process. Because I think those instances that you're talking about where you see things that, you know, should not have been approved according to the rules, I think, you know, most of the time, that's people not even coming to the commission. So they didn't know, you know, and then it's done. And, you know, so I appreciate that you're here and-
So Heidi?
Yeah, just with that note about the vinyl windows, I, for example, recently purchased a building downtown on Main Street, and I did extensive renovations on that building. And I did get approval for the vinyl windows that were replaced. They weren't replacing wood, they were replacing metal. And you could no longer get that style. And so that was the recommendation in keeping with the historical design. So I think there are a lot of people that still do go through the HPC and still do get those, you know, yeah, items approved.
Rick?
Well, I think there's a place for some of this historic Ardon buildings. But to me, the words Petersons and Woody Kerbels isn't very historic. I just don't see, I think Craig's going to be spending a ton of money making this building usable again. And it hasn't been well-used now for a bunch of years. And whether he, the interior, the exterior, to keep it right, to make the building look good, and there are a number of murals in historic downtown Pocatello now that have nothing to do with the history of our city. And I think this will look far better than two or three words painted on the side of a building that are fading away. I think this is something we ought to give.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, I also appreciate the fact that you're honoring the process. But I think we, I mean, that historic Old Town is, was designated in, what, the 80s as a historic area? And so I think if that is what we want as a city, if we want to preserve the ambiance and the nature of that area as, you know, the core of our town, then I think there is room for not necessarily, you know, preserving every chip of paint that was put on a building. But I also think that it's important that whatever replaces it does somehow add to capture, support, promote what that historic part of town, why it was designated historic in the first place. So I would like to see if an alternative to either just leaving a deteriorating, you know, sign, painted sign, is proposed, I would like to see it have some connection to historic Pocatello. Because that's the whole point of that, of preserving that area. And I agree with Linda that I have nothing against, in fact, I, as do millions, appreciate Michelangelo's art. I'm just not seeing any kind of particular connection to Pocatello. And I would like to see that. I would like to see the alternative somehow still promote and support what that historic Old Town is trying to, is supposed to capture about our history.
I just wanted to clarify one thing. You were talking about that we have a number of murals downtown, you know, that don't have any historical significance. And that is absolutely true. My understanding, and Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of the difference is that in this situation, you have an existing mural that has been designated as a historic, as something of historical significance in Pocatello. Those murals were painted new, not over top of something else existing. So there wasn't the, you know, the question of taking away some other historical thing and covering it up with something new. And I understand that's the difference in this situation. I'm getting a nod from our planning people. So that, I just wanted to clarify. You're absolutely right, but I think those are, they're slightly different situations. Or maybe more than slightly, I don't know.
Okay, Rick?
Well, I think the alternative, as Craig goes back and repoints all the brick, fixes the building structurally, they were left with a crosshatch mess in which most of the existing sign doesn't exist anymore. Would that be better than repainting the entire building again?
And that is the question.
I don't think so.
That's the question.
Is there anything that prohibits him from coming back to the, you know, if it does turn out to be really ugly after that brick pointing is done, then he can still come back with another proposal for a different mural or a variation to the Historic Preservation Commission again, right? Is that correct? Just not the same exact one?
I think, as our planner, would it have to be, if he needed to come back with another proposal, would it have to be a different proposal altogether?
If it was different, we'd have to go through the same process of the Historic Preservation Commission to get a new design approved.
So if he went through all of this and he destroyed the, and the ghost sign was destroyed and it looked really bad, and he came back with this exact same proposal, could he do that?
Well, my question was, was just saying, I'm pretty sure he can come back with a different proposal. I wasn't necessarily saying the same one. I don't know.
The same one was already denied by the commission, so he had to come back to council.
So he'd have to, what he'd have to do with a different proposal is go through the Historic Preservation Commission again and then follow that process, the same process he's already been through?
And what would that take? Are we talking 90 days, 120 days?
For historic preservation, depending on when he applies, it's usually a couple weeks from when he applies to when.
All right, so.
Then he has a decision though, and then if they, he feels he needs to appeal that, then he needs, then he will have to come in front of the council again, which would be a couple more weeks. So you're looking probably at, say, 45 days is what I would say, probably.
But what you're asking, just to clarify, is like, try the restoration and then see what it looks like and then make a decision at that point?
Yeah, I'm just saying, that would be a possibility. We're not, if the council decides to uphold the Historic Preservation's decision and this mural doesn't go through, that doesn't mean that it's condemned to look ugly forever. Something else could be proposed. I guess that's what I'm, that's what my point is.
Roger. I, for one, think that it ought to go back to the drawing board some. Because, you know, there's a lot going on with this, and I think it contradicts the historical setting. There are two things in this mural that are 50 years old or less, I would think, the Minidome and the Stevens Performing Arts Center, you know. And I don't think that historic Pocatello was too aware of Michelangelo, you know, based on our history. So I would just say that maybe there's a way, I think there needs to be a meeting of the minds between what your purpose is with your building and what you want to express on that building, but also working with the Historical Preservation Commission to find a medium ground. I understand the signage on there and it's historical, but it's also his building and he's going to want to be selling something out of it instead of furniture. And so I just think there's a way that perhaps you can work with the Historical Commission to find a better thing. And as I look at this, I'm not a painter, but I look at the different things here. And I would say that you're going to be at a lot more to get your proposed thing in than to restore the other painting. There's just a lot more detail in what you're proposing. So I just suggest you go back to them.
Along those lines, I'm pretty sure that Historic Preservation Commission is usually open to even not having you have to go through it. Yes, it's approved, or no, it's denied. Like, they'll let you come to their meeting and kind of do, you know, like.
Dialogue.
You know, like a work session or something. And they'll kind of, you can kind of go back and forth with them and try to come up with something that works. I know that's probably disappointing to you because you like the design that you've come up with, but I know they would be willing to do that if you were willing to, you know, engage with them in that way. And I'm sorry, that probably might be disappointing to you because then somebody else's opinions and likes are also having to be considered. And so I understand that that can feel frustrating, but I know that they would be open to that.
And I did want to, I would recommend that too. I think they are usually pretty good about helping people find a solution that works for both sides. But I did want to clarify too, like, what criteria they're looking at. Because I think a lot of people don't understand when you say, you know, something is historical. And you can make the argument, you know, Michelangelo is historical, yes, but not the period of significance for Pocatello either. According to the Secretary of the Interior, where those standards come from, you know, when you designate a historical area, you select a period of historical significance for that area. And so you're trying to keep everything, and it doesn't have to be, you know, in our case, it's the late 1800s. It doesn't mean that everything has to be exactly, you know, in line with the way it would have been in the late 1800s. But that's the overall image and ambiance and look that we're going for in the downtown area. So with that being said, there's a couple of things in the mural proposed that are, you know, either way too new, way too old, European, not American, you know. I mean, we're sort of combining a lot of different historical periods in an image. And I think that's another place where the Historical Preservation Commission's hands are somewhat tied because their task, their charge, is to look at those standards as set by the Secretary of Interior and for historic preservation in the United States and apply those. And so they're looking at what is our period of historical significance. And that is, you know, not Renaissance Italy or, you know, the Minidome. Those can't fall outside that period. So that's part of the issue too. And I just wanted to explain what it means when we talk about historical significance for our downtown, what exactly that means and what we're looking for and where those standards come from.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the tuck pointing and the building restoration, the structural restoration.
They already approved that.
It's already approved.
The HPC did.
Oh, all right.
This is the sign that is here.
That wasn't the issue.
Okay, all right. So we don't need to do anything to codify our recommendation that we're not going to overturn that?
Well, you're making a decision already. Don't we need to decide?
She's asking what kind of work.
We need a motion, either a motion to approve or to uphold the appeal, the Historic Preservation Commission, or to approve the sign, the.
Okay, so I move that we uphold the Historic Preservation Committee.
Commission.
Decision.
Decision. However, just noting the conversation that we've had here and the recommendation to go back and work with the commission to find something that hopefully will work for both parties.
Second.
So we have a motion by Stevens and a second by Adamson.
Mr. Mayor, before you move vote, can I ask Craig a question?
Sure.
Will, if you're denied tonight, Craig, will that in any way delay your progress on renovation of this building?
I mean, it does just cause us to think about what we're doing there, but, I mean, it wouldn't delay progress because we have a building permit. And we, I would just like to mention that there is, you know, a pretty good expense to put the scaffold up to do the tuck pointing. So, you know, to say, come back, it's probably not going to happen in the same season to where you could leave that scaffolding up, so.
Does that need to be done before the interior and other modifications are made?
No.
Okay.
I just had a couple of comments. My first comment is, I read all of the things you said about how you don't like the existing sign and you believe it to be an eyesore. This is where it's really hard for us because it starts getting into opinion. I totally appreciate and respect that that is your opinion and that you don't like that sign. Just to share with you maybe some insight as to what maybe some other people in town might be thinking. I had an experience today where I was just down at the bank and somebody said, oh, hey, what's, you know, what's new in city council? Got anything, you know, coming up on your agenda? And I said, oh, just some subdivisions. We've got a request for a mural, you know, to replace the Peterson sign. And they said, oh, I love that sign. You know, this is just a random person that expressed their love for that sign. I actually have heard that from a lot of different people. And I know that's probably not what you want to hear, but I think a lot of people do, even if they never shopped at that store. You know, I never shopped, I never bought furniture from Woody Kerbal Peterson. But growing up in Pocatello, you know, the pictures that are taken down Main Street, frequently that sign is visible. And so it feels very Pocatello, just because we're all used to that view and we're used to that sign. And so that's why it's a little bit of a struggle, I think. It's been noted in the, you know, historic thing specifically as a historic Pocatello sign, and so that's where it's hard. So with that said, I just wanted to tell you though, even though you may hate us and be mad at us for this decision, thank you so much for your investment in Pocatello and for purchasing that building and for all of your efforts to improve it and make it better and to help with the revitalization of downtown. I don't want you to feel like that goes unnoticed and that we're, you know, not on your team about that, even if this doesn't go the way that you're hoping. But we truly do appreciate that and we're excited to see that building come back to life and be used. And I know that's a great building that I have always admired and that was amazing. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Adamson. Would you, would you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Cheetah?
No.
Stuart?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just have a question. I think this is probably Brent for you. Do we, do we have, or as we're looking at the concrete heads of plan, I realize that murals isn't really land use. But I'm wondering if we could really take a look at what our criteria are for murals and other visual art in downtown, the historic downtown Pocatello. Because I, you know, I understand the, what, the anomaly that Rick is, you know, is bringing forward that, and I'm wondering if maybe part, if we can clarify so that whatever visual art does go into historic downtown Pocatello has some kind of coherence and some kind of focus from this point forward.
We can look at something.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to then now, Agenda Item Number 10, Building Permit Fee Waiver Reimbursement Request, Yaden Properties LLC. The council may wish to consider a request from Craig Yaden, Yaden Properties LLC, for a waiver of the following fees for property located at 224 North Main Street. Fire review fee in the amount of $1,149.40. Building permit fee in the amount of $7,183.75. And planned review fee reimbursement in the amount of $4,669.44. amount of $4,669.44, for a total of $13,259.00.
Mr. Mayor, again, I'd like to hear from Craig.
Okay.
Yeah, as many of you are aware, just to change a a use permit of a building is a pretty painful, significant thing. It makes you have to come current on really all the code. And if you were to leave it as as it is, has been historically, you get grandfathered on many items. So, you know, that's, that's, I guess, the city of Pocatello has adopted some of these codes that that didn't come into play. So it's painful to go through all those necessary things and, you know, sprinkler systems and elevators and the likes. So I was just looking for a way for, I guess, Pocatello to, as painlessly, I was trying to think of a painless way to participate. And that's kind of what I come up with as a as a suggestion.
Okay. Councilwoman Lurik?
Just wanted to comment on this one, too. And I, this is really, really difficult because, like Heidi said, I so appreciate everything you're doing. I'm excited about what you're doing and and don't want in any way to discourage that or make you feel like we're against it. But there's a legal issue here that is very difficult, I I feel. You know, Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we make an exception and say that you don't need to get these things and do these things, then the next person that comes along says, well, he got it. I want it. And before you know it, we can't get anybody to, you know, do the things that it's supposed to do. So that, to me, is is the really difficult part here is, you know, I I understand that these, you know, are, as you said, painful. But there is a a process there and we have rules. And I just feel like we have to evenly apply those rules, or we could be setting a very dangerous precedent that would then possibly even open us up to liability. If somebody who paid the these things previously comes back and says, wait a minute, you know, I want my money back then, we could be in trouble. So that's what I think we struggle with on a request like this, is how do we how do we weigh that? But it's not, you know, whatever we decide here, it's not meant in any way to discourage you or to suggest that we don't appreciate what you're doing in the city, because we do. But I think that's the difficulty of this kind of request, at least from my perspective.
I just, some of these things are not specific to Pocatello. I need to correct that. When we go with uniform fire code, uniform electrical code, and those things, for any building that doesn't fit that, when you remodel it, we've got, those are just universal standards across the nation. And, you know, for example, the church I pastor, when we wanted to change what we were doing in terms of ministry, we had to do a retrofit for a fire alarm system and a sprinkler system. So it's it's not just hitting a business, it hits nonprofits, it hits everybody when you go through these changes. So I understand where you're coming from, but, you know, it's, I think there may be grants that are more appropriate, but I don't think taxpayer-funded rebate, so to speak, are appropriate.
Are you aware of the grants that are available? Have you talked to the staff about the downtown area grants? Because that might be a good, again, it's hoops you have to jump through. So I know that feels frustrating to you. And believe me, I've been through a change of use before, and I've done big remodels before and stuff. So I totally, totally feel your pain. I don't want you to feel like we're just, you know, whatever. But but that that's probably going to be the more appropriate way for us to be able to give some assistance. Because like Linda said, we really get into issue if we start picking and choosing who we're going to waive fees for and and somebody else doesn't get it and is upset.
And if we want to go down that trail, again, it seems to me that we need to have, I mean, if 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 that's someplace we want to go, then we need to have criteria so that there's some kind of structured.
There is through the city. Who would you say is who would?
Okay, that's not what you're looking for.
Okay.
If it's the, we have a facade program that you could apply for, and you talked to Jim about that.
Okay.
And then there's also historic tax credits that are due to federal government that are an option that you can apply for as well. If you meet those, it's for preservation points, which you're you're doing. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think you would probably have a fairly good chance of meeting those. But as Heidi, yeah, as Heidi said, it would mean, you know, a few more hoops to jump through. But that would be the better process because it wouldn't then be us setting a dangerous precedent that, you know, that we just sort of arbitrarily don't follow our rules. So I would suggest meeting with with Jim as soon as possible and seeing what options are available to you, because I think there are a few.
So council, I would entertain a motion. Councilwoman Bray?
I move that we deny this request.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Adamson. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetum?
This time I have to agree with him, Craig. Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Craig, if you'd please get with our planning department, maybe help with some of these things that might be beneficial.
Now, I would think the Historic Preservation Commission would have some lead on some grants. I mean, they shouldn't just be a permission giver, they should be an enabler, too.
I think most grants are local, if it comes to the historic preservation.
There's some national, too, I mean, historical.
Yeah, it's something to look at, but anyway. We'll move to Agenda Item 11, Annual Arbor Day Tree Planting Grant Application Science and Environment. Council may wish to consider the following requests regarding an Arbor Day Tree Planting Grant. A, approves the middle of an Idaho Nursery and Landscaping Association grant application in the amount of $300, and if awarded, B, authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents pertaining to the grant. The funds will be used to purchase one to two trees to plant in association with Arbor Day. A 25% city match is required, which will be provided through in-kind services from Parks Department, to plant trees. Councilman Cheetum?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of Agenda Item Number 11, the Annual Arbor Day Tree Planting Grant Application, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents pertaining to the grant.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheetum and a second by Lurik.
Mr. Mayor, where are these trees going to go?
That would be, if we award the grant, that will be the Parks Department will make that decision.
I hope they'll put them on the golf course. They'll take a bunch of trees out of there this year.
Kidding me? I want every tree out of the golf course. Same on you for talking about that. We're going to end this discussion for crying out loud. We need to eliminate all the trees on the golf course. We have a motion by Cheetum and a second by Lurik. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetum?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Believe me, I golf in the shade.
Sounds like a personal problem.
It is. I don't argue that. We'll move to Agenda Item 12. An ordinance annexing approximately 8.65 acres of land to extend the Pocatello city limits east and south of the recently annexed 7.56 acres of land located at the east end of Vista Drive. The annexed property will be zoned residential low density with a comprehensive plan map designation of residential. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I moved it. Ordinance Agenda Item Number 12 be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Sir. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheetum. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, annexing and zoning an 8.65 acre parcel of land located in Government Law 2, Section 19, Town Ship 6, South Range 35 East, Boise, Meridian, Bannan County, Idaho, by extending the city corporate boundaries east and southeast of the recently annexed 7.56 acres of land known as High Terrace subdivision, or High Terrace Division 1. At the end, east end of Vista Drive, said property, more particularly described in Exhibit A of this ordinance, providing for the city clerk to file a certified copy of this ordinance with the Idaho State Tax Commission and with Bannan County Attorney, Treasurer, and Assessor in accordance with Idaho Code Sections 50-223 and 63-2215, providing for said land to be zoned residential low density, RL, and the comprehensive plan map designation be residential, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13, Items from the Audience. This item has been set aside to hear items from the audience, not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda item. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, you will have three minutes per speaker and a total of 15 minutes for this agenda item. We'll go ahead and get started. Trina Hall?
Hi, I'm Trina Hall.
Trina, if you'd come up over here to the.
Yes, sir.
Microphone.
Good evening, I'm Trina Hall. I'm here, we're all here actually together. We're landowners up Pocatello Creek Road, and we're here to discuss the Pioneer Trail System. We need more time. We're requesting to be placed on the agenda because we didn't even know about this. And we feel as landowners, we're getting our rights taken away. We want to work together. We we support the trail system, but we want to work together with the outdoor recreation, BLM, and the city to better our community. Like, what are those events going to host? How are we going to be able to put the funds that profit from these, you know, mountain bike races back into the community, but also to allow us formalized agreements to protect our rights? I'm sorry if I'm emotional, but this is, this is like, we just found out about this. And it is not very long. I've sent an email, but it just seems like we're getting forced out of meetings that are privately held by some of our neighbors that might be benefiting from something that we're not. This land is a legacy for me. I've lived up there my entire life. And my grandpa cut in every single field that you see, from Highland to Rapid Creek. We're concerned with also, like, the maps that are on this agenda for March 11th. They're they're kind of just, they're not very good. So what's happening to the future plans that are cutting across Camelback? Like, what, I can't tell where that property is. We're concerned about the wording of acquisitions of property. It stated that, you know, we want this short-term parking, but they might acquire property, but the the landowner that's there, he's not here tonight. He's he's with his mom on hospice, but he didn't even know about any of it. So how are we acquiring and talking about it when the landlord doesn't even know? We're just asking for transparency. We're asking for, to be placed on the agenda so we can, we can get together. Our neighbors don't even know about this. We haven't had time to talk about it. We are unprepared. We need future plans as landowners. And we, one of the things is, like, there's fencing that's been discussed on this, like, there's safeguards. So we need a plan across the south of, like, where there's the pipeline, south, to protect us as landowners, so that our land isn't acquired, accessed, trespassed. And also, the mentioning of, like, the future plans. Well, there's a map here with future plans for the trails, but what happens when you guys want to go east? Not you guys, but you know what I mean. The Pioneer Trail wants to go east to connect to Moonlight. That's all of the land that those private landowners don't know anything about. And so that is my concern. We need to have safeguards. We need to have formalized agreements. We want to better our community. We want to be on the trail system, but somehow, this is all like a secret to us. And we don't know about it. And we want to give back to our community. So, Mayor, we are requesting to be placed on the agenda for future so we can get with our neighbors and come together on this and make a good plan moving forward. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I might just add, I don't know how that happens without everybody else. And so I would recommend, before you put a formal request to be on an agenda, to talk about this, that you get with the Parks Department and have the discussion with them. I don't think anybody's tried to keep anybody out of it. I think they've actually erred on the other side to try to get as many people involved as possible to this point. So I would recommend, I'm not going to say no to putting you on an agenda by any means, but I would recommend getting with the Parks Department so that you can have those discussions. You can see what maps. That's more than what we've seen, quite frankly. We don't, you know more than we know, because we don't want to know anymore until we have to make the decisions that we need to make. And so I would highly recommend calling our Parks Director, John Banks, so that you can be involved in those discussions. So that would be my suggestion to you right now. And then apparently we have some more, but I don't want to get to everybody else.
Yep, I just wanted to agree with what the mayor's saying. I know we have excellent staff in the Parks and Rec Department, and they, in my experience, have been very open to feedback when they went through the Ross Park Master Plan and things like that. And they definitely took all of that under consideration. So I don't want you to feel like nobody's wanting to listen to you or anything like that. I'm sure they would be happy to sit down and, you know, go over in detail and explain and answer questions and and come to something that will, you know, work for everybody.
Sure. Yes, Rick?
Well, I just want to say this is far from a done deal. The discussion we had last week was asking for permission to try and put an agreement together with Bureau of Land Management. We haven't approved any construction, any trails, nothing so far. And what the mayor's saying is to talk to John and talk to Lance and and see exactly, because I agree with you, with those maps, I had a real struggle. What they were showing was those two, I was trying to figure out where in the devil the road was that they were talking about.
So I guess what everybody's saying is you are right now at the very, very front end of anything. There was no meetings, discussions before as far as city official city anything. So you're at the very front end of things. So, okay, thank you. We'll move to Jim Sanford.
As you all know, I'm here with this group of landowners. My name is Jim Sanford. I'm here today to discuss the integrity and honesty issues being revealed after a Facebook post on the Pocatello Trails by Trina Hall, who just spoke. The question was posed, that she brought forth, was a comment, like she had just said, where, what's going on with this? You know, who better to ask than the actual Pocatello Trails, right? In that interaction with Lance Clark, a gentleman by the name of Jeremy Lamson chimed in and said to Lance Clark, hey, we have a meeting set up this week. I thought you should know, which brought Trina Hall into the picture of when and where. Where's this meeting? What's it about? Well, Jeremy Lamson, at that point, decided to say, this is a private meeting. Only certain people are involved. It's the people that are directly associated with the Alameda landfill, close proximity type type stuff. I chimed in and said, look, you need to do your research, because Trina Hall, Trail's family, are. family are legacy Pocatello tree, okay? So, of course, I had to defend, because Trina is, is very important to me. As he stated in response by Lance, a meeting was hit, was in the works with the individual that is right adjacent to Jeremy, his property, which we later found out that Jeremy is trying to purchase the land from that gentleman to expand, and anybody knows the area, I think it's Crest Corp. that originally was trying to develop the property. There's drilling permits, issues to get wells in the area, stuff like that, but lo and behold, Jeremy has a, has a well drilled right above the cap, and he wants to control everything that's going on with that, including keeping the individuals who also have land up there that could be impacted out of this meeting. Whether it's to re-vegetate his property, or put up a fence for him to protect his lands, the people in this room also deserve what Trina was trying to bring forth, deserve the right to say, hey, if you guys are going to give a per diem or a lump sum to fix your fence or post science.
Thank you, thank you very much. We'll move to Kevin Skinner.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ready? Kevin Skinner, I own some of the property that's up there adjacent to what we're discussing with the trails. It's been less than 24 hours since I've even heard about this, and so I'm pretty upset that, you know, we've, we've even got this far, and none of the landowners know about it, when everybody says, oh, it's all on the table, it's all out in the open, when it's not. Nobody here has been informed, and a ton of the other people that are out there have not been informed about anything either, and it really concerns me, because I think it's going, it's absolutely going to degrade the quality of my property, and along with everybody else, and I think it's, you know, completely garbage that we've not been able to be informed, and I will guarantee that there will have to be some kind of stuff on an agenda so that we can discuss this, because it's just, this is ludicrous. And I really think that we need to, to get things more out in the open with everybody on, on where we're at with stuff, and that's all I got, I got to go take care of my wife. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Stewart?
Good evening, I am Dr. Leslie Stewart, and I'm here speaking as a landowner who would be directly impacted by the proposed Pocatello Pioneer Ridge Trail System, and I'm also here representing one part of our landowner neighborhood coalition. As far as what I have to say, I believe Trina summed up our concerns very well, but there are some items that I'd like to reiterate. Simply stated, this is private property that should not be taken at the expense of landowner quality of life. All of us are already overwhelmed with vandalism, theft, poaching, property damage, and break-ins due to people accessing our lands from the existing trail systems. It's a huge impact on our quality of life, it's a huge impact on the land value, and quite honestly, it's a huge impact on our safety. We believe that unless formal protections are put in place for directly impacted landowners, that these concerns and these violations by our community members will not only continue, but get worse, and we can look at other trail systems in the area for evidence of this. So, areas near trailheads of existing trails have experienced increasing crime rates. This is a problem, and I believe that formal agreements and protections need to be considered and implemented. We also worry about the pressure this puts on wildlife and the ecosystem itself. All land above 5,000 feet in that area are designated as important wildlife areas, and it's so important to our community that landowners must designate at least 50% of their property to open space for the wildlife. We worry about the impact and pressure this will have on local wildlife, as well as the ecosystem, which is part of what makes Pocatello what it is, and what makes Pocatello special. We require a formalized agreement to protect private property rights, and to allow us to continue protecting the wildlife, ecosystem, and other rights of private property that make Pocatello a great place to live.
Thank you. Let's see, is it Matthew Stewart?
Yes. So, I am with the coalition as well. I just wanted to propose a couple of questions concerning the addition to the Pioneer Ridge mountain bike trail system. My first question is, we have just passed the acceptance of the original mountain bike trail system, and I don't know if it's constructed or not, but we don't have any idea of the kind of traffic we're going to get, and how people will respect the property, not only the private property, but also the government property, and without knowing how that will impact the private property and the government property, I feel like we should wait a little while before we even consider another trail system. Also, the current trail systems that we have, as Leslie said, already have additional crime associated with those areas, mostly just where the trailheads are, car theft, car break-ins, human waste issues, and there's no cameras there, there's no security for people, no, security, by security I mean police boxes, where people can reach police if they need to for safety, and I feel like this is important to implement before we consider other trail systems, and I guess that's all I really wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. And that is it. I just might let you know, please reach out to our Parks Department, they, they, you're at the front end of this, you're at the cutting edge, I'm telling you right now, so thank you very much. Rick?
You know, I got a comment. I was angry after I left last week's meeting. I felt like we were blindsided by that entire proposal. It hit Facebook, we started getting emails, we didn't know a damn thing about what was going on, and I kind of resent that happening, and I'm surprised that it happened on our Parks and Recreation Department.
I did talk to John Banks. All right, well, well, thank you very much, and I would recommend that you get involved in that group, we don't have a thing with us, we're not entertaining any kind of a MOU or anything like that with the BLM, they'll have better maps, they'll understand it better, and so, this is a process, this is where it starts, we appreciate your involvement, it's good to be here now instead of when we're in front of it trying to make a decision on the MOU, so, thank you. With that, Roger?
I, I agree with Rick, we were hearing about something we didn't know anything about long before we were presented with it. I will say that I think the council asked a lot of appropriate questions of this group. I think we asked about intrusion into private lands, I think we, we asked about systems to have toilets, we were, we were cautious about only using public lands, not, there wasn't anything in the proposal about any private lands at that point, so, but we were at the very start, and we, we put a lot of the same interests forward to the group that you guys have raised today. Now, that doesn't mean that, that we were hurt, but we put them forward, okay?
Okay, so get involved, okay, another one. We're just going to go around the room, so get ready.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming, and, you know, having the, you know, will to come and speak, I know some people always get nervous about it, and so, thank you very much for coming and talking to us. I just, I was feeling a lot of anger, and I just want you to know, like, we at the city are not having secret meetings, we are not, you know, if, if one of your neighbors was doing that, I can't speak for them, but I just want you to know, you know, there's nothing covert or anything like that going on with the council or with the city, you know, we don't control what, we don't know everything about the BLM, we don't know everything about your neighbors, you know, and whatever agreements they might be working out, so we can only speak to things that are specifically dealing with the city, which was what we talked about at our last meeting, but thank you for coming, and I just, I don't want you to be upset with us and think that we're somehow involved in some, something secret or shady, we're, our intent is to be as open and, you know, transparent as possible, and to have you be informed and, and go through the process that we're also going through, so, thanks.
Mayor Blatt, we appreciate the recommendations for how we should move forward, and Mr. Cheatham and Mr. Bray, thank you genuinely, person to person, for providing that validation.
Okay, thank you. With that, we are adjourned.